...related, we'll let you know to get you out safe. I have an approval for the Board of Education meeting minutes of August 7th. If I get a motion to approve.
Motion?
Barry and a second. Jen, all in favor? That is everyone. One quick note, Mrs. Rogan is not at the meeting this evening. There's an FYI of some budget transfers and some warrants that everyone received. If I could please get a motion to approve the warrants for August 16th of 17?
Motion?
Barry and Bill is the second.
We don't pay much in the way of bills this month, do we?
That's a good thing.
All in favor? That is everyone. Does everyone have anything they'd like to share with the public?
I do. Actually, I attended the family show of the marching band yesterday. It was held at Finley. It was the end of their band camp. They were presenting their brand-new show that they'll be competing with this year, and they were amazing. I thought they did a great job.
It was terrific.
It's a nice, big group there. I saw a bunch of, I think, younger kids, so I think we got a pretty good handful from Finley, I'm guessing. Anyway, they were tremendous, and I just want to wish them the best of luck in their season.
It was the first time I ever went, and it was really fun.
It was aw- aren't they great? I mean, those kids are really something else.
I mean, I've seen the band before, obviously.
Right, no, but at the family show, it's a really nice day, actually, and they had perfect weather for it yesterday, not too hot. That's all I got.
Anybody else? Mr. Superintendent?
I have a little bit of a list, but there's a couple of things that we've done this summer and some things we're excited about. I can share it with the crowd. We are about to embark, yes. We're about to embark upon our first year with our universal pre-kindergarten program in district, and I will tell you that we have three very excited teachers and three very excited schools. Jefferson Southdown and this building about to welcome well over 100 students into our UPK classrooms. And as mentioned early on, this is going to provide us with an opportunity for more regular contact with those that work these programs with us. And the articulation, the professional development is going to be jointly performed and conducted, and it's an exciting opportunity for the district. We talked a little bit, actually had the board with me on Friday as we visited several of our buildings. Very pleased to remind and announce again that we are a full-service, high-school, air-conditioned auditorium. It is a beautiful thing. There are two 7,000-pound units on the roof of the high school that are churning out cool air left and right upon demand, and obviously, if we're not using the facility, we turn it off. We will talk a little bit further about facility use fee changes as a result of that, but I think people will be more than happy to add a little bit to what they contribute to have a facility like that. It's certainly going to draw some interest. Transportation underway. We had about 30 people involved. Ms. McCoy ran this morning. Our new teacher orientation program, some very excited faces in the audience this evening to join us. I believe the highlight of the day, and they can just nod and say absolutely, was the bus tour at 1:15, conducted by myself and Mr. Levy. It's a comedy routine that you just can't get enough of, and they will be back with us tomorrow to finish the orientation program. Conference Day is next week on Tuesday. We'll welcome back the staff, and the kids join us on Wednesday of next week. Just a couple of other little things here. Huntington Awareness Day is scheduled for Saturday, I believe it's September 9th. There is a parade and a fair. It kicks off from Huntington High School and will end at Stimson Middle School. This is not a Huntington School District phenomenon. It is going to be an event where representation from several of the local Huntington School Districts are participating, and we will have, actually, they asked, each district is going to have an honoree. I ask that we be able to honor a student from Huntington High School, and we will be honoring Ms. Emily Andrea Mirón, who is just a spectacular young lady who has done wonderful things for the school and community, and it's our chance to say thank you to her.
Can I ask you a question on that? Because usually the marching, does the marching band participate in that?
Here is, the marching band will participate. There is a football game that day which starts at 3:00. I can make the joke again that when you see the marching band running up Oakwood Road, it's with a purpose, but there is, all kidding aside, there is plenty of time in between for them to get back.
The game doesn't start till 3:00?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The game time was changed so it could accommodate that parade. Make sure the Booster Club knows so they're not there selling hot dogs at 1:00.
Yeah, I have to, yeah, okay, thanks.
There is a program being offered, it's a program that's run before called Be Smart, Don't Start. This time, it's at the Huntington Fire Department on Leverett, just up the road. It is a program that is designed to help kids understand the importance of drug awareness, prevention, healthy choices, good habits, positive decision-making. It's not the first time it's been offered. There were several instances of it last year circulating among the fire departments, and in talking with the Huntington chief, it is going to be, and our kids are well represented there. We've always had a number of kids, and a lot of our coaches and our community leaders are helping to get our kids there. It's going to be a day of, let's get the high school kids there for sure, community service credit, and it's also a day that we've agreed as a no homework night throughout the district. So even if you don't attend, these are conversations, time can be set aside for conversations between, among families, again, with that good choice, positive decision-making theme in mind. Three other things I'd like to mention very briefly for those that are here. We are in the process of filling a principalship at Flower Hill. Based on the board's review tonight, in all likelihood, we will be starting with an interim for the first couple of weeks, and we'll go through the hiring process until we find the right candidate for the position. Mr. Small will be leaving us. He's actually been appointed to an assistant superintendency in the district further east. So of course, we congratulate him, 12 dedicated years to the Huntington School District. I wish there were more people here tonight, and I'll probably mention this again, but I'd like to give everybody at this table and in this room tonight a sense of what Huntington is all about, and I'm going to try and keep this generic, so no names involved. But a situation came to my attention where one of our 2017 graduates had gotten into the school of her dreams, and unfortunately, it was a situation where even with all the aid involved, and this is a private school, it came down to about $9,000 a year, and the family could only come up with, I believe, four. High school principal, who's not here tonight, and that's why I think I'd like to mention this again, made a phone call. That phone call was to one of our community leaders, who made another phone call, so involving somebody sitting at this table, and another phone call to somebody who's not sitting at this table. In about, I'm going to say minutes' worth of time, this young lady was on her way to college in North Carolina, basically saying, "I'm going to pay this forward." That's Huntington people, and it's a story that really, it should get out there more because that's what this community is all about, and everybody should recognize that. So to all involved in that situation, I'd like to say thank you.
Absolutely.
And I'd just like to finish by sending my, or I'm sure we're all in agreement on this, sending our thoughts and prayers to those in the Houston area, tough time down there.
Thank you, sir. That takes us to our first public commentary evening. Just to go over the guidelines for our public commentaries, those speaking at the first public commentary meeting shall be limited in length to three minutes. We will have a total time of 30 minutes. Commentary during this portion of the meeting shall be related to the items slated for discussion and action on the agenda. Only if there's time remaining within the 30-minute period following the comments on discussion and action, speakers may issue commentary on permissible items that are not on the agenda. If time permits, at the end of the board meeting, an additional public commentary will occur. People that would like to address the board must state their name and address, identify any organization they may be representing at the meeting, or else I ask you please sign the signing sheet situated at the lectern in advance. Include your name, address, phone number, email address, and the nature of your comment. Only school district residents and staff members shall be permitted to address the board except for persons who have been invited to the district to make a presentation to the board. Persons who wish to address the board shall line up at the microphone used for this purpose and shall be permitted to address the board in that order. Comments to the board could be limited by the board president and should relate to school matters. Employees should not be identified by name during public commentary. Comments relating to the competence or personal conduct of individuals are prohibited and shall be declared out of order. Comments and questions from the public need not be responded to at the meeting. At his or her discretion, the board president may answer the questions or respond to comments or refer them to the superintendent or other board members for reply or consideration and a later response. At this point, if anyone would like to come to the lectern, you may.
Can you repeat that, please? Somebody come up.
I was going to say, I counted all of you up. You each get three minutes.
Well, thank you.
Did you have?
Thank you.
Yes, since I'd like to address the board just briefly. It's not something that's on the agenda. It's my first time here, so I did not sign.
Just come up.
Are you a resident of the district, sir? Okay, then please come to the podium and just sign in up there with your information, and you'll have your.
30 minutes. 30 minutes, 15 seconds.
3 minutes, 15 seconds.
Well, I'm not starting until he calls.
The other nine people don't want their minutes.
Better get going on this stuff.
Oh, wow, don't do that, Kathy.
Thank you. I'm going to start the timer now. If you'd like to address the board, you may.
Yes, my name is John Issing. I'm a 35-year resident of the town of Huntington, 15 years in this school district, and I have a letter that I'd like to present to the board for consideration in defense of somebody in the district.
Okay, fair enough. You may.
I have no axe to grind at all.
That's good.
I don't know whether I should get into any specifics without naming names, or you just?
Probably not. It would probably be best not to unless.
Okay, that's fine.
Any names really can't be said if they're employees or students or anything like that.
That's fine.
If you'd like to distribute that, you can hand that to me, and I'll make sure our board does get copies of everything.
That would be great.
Ooh, careful.
Thank you, sir.
If you have any questions or?
Certainly.
Talk to me again about your board watching.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. That takes us to our presentation for the evening.
Thanks. Oh, thank you.
To Kathy.
Hang on. Oh, should I move promptly? No? Do you want to just sit down here, too? Yeah, that's just what I could share with you.
Regarding the board goals for 2017-18.
I don't know if you can raise that up just a little bit more, or you can scroll. Okay, these, well, let's put it this way, the 16-17 goals were the starting point for this, and we had some conversation on August 7th about where we stood with respect to the goals from last year, and some suggestions were made to incorporate some modified and additional items into this year's 17-18 Board of Education district goals. I'm blind at the moment. That said, this would be a night to just review them briefly, and if there is anything you'd like to add to any one of these items or expand upon the list further, this would be the time to have that conversation, and if we're ready, we can adopt this evening or bring it back to the table on September 11th. So just very quickly, you'll notice some of the changes that I inserted in here, the first goal, and just to give you a sense of what goals should look like, these are not specific action items. These are broad goals that will be followed with our administrative objectives and action items, and will be drilled down to the building levels as well. So curricular and instructional measures aligned with new state and local standards in the core disciplines. And for those that have not been following, we're going to be experiencing curricular changes in just about every discipline across the board beginning in 17-18. The Common Core is out, the Next Gen Standards are in, there are new New York State Science Learning Standards, there's a new Social Studies Framework, there's a lot of change taking place at the state level. So this is a goal that was modified to reflect that, and obviously, with our population, which we are very proud of in terms of top to bottom, students from all walks of life, socioeconomics, ethnic backgrounds, obviously, one of our major focal points is on closing subgroup achievement gaps. Number two, provision of authentic and differentiated learning experiences in classrooms at all levels, which has served as well as a goal, and we want to continue that. Stem and steam opportunities, social-emotional learning experiences at all grade levels, again, preparing students for 21st century post-secondary academia, as well as career opportunities, and also helping students to understand that there are other facets to education beyond just the four Rs and the things that we talk about as core discipline. Students need to learn how to get along with each other and focus on altruism, community service, et cetera. Number four, fiscally responsible and transparent budget process, economic constraints, the tax levy limit is still in place, we are still looking to maximize efficiencies while maintaining the integrity of programs and services offered at all Huntington schools. Obviously, we want to take the funding that we receive from our taxpayers and give as much of it as possible to our students, our instructional programs. I will tell you, our buildings and grounds, folks, have done a great job in terms of doing a lot of work in-house outside of the capital projects so that we can do this in a different way. The LED lighting project that basically permeated every building in this district, that was done in-house so that we can not only maximize lighting efficiency, brighter lights, but also take advantage of the rebates that typically companies would consume at no cost to the district but at no gain to the district either. Multi-year fiscal plan is something that we're always working on. It's very difficult to predict certain facets of a multi-year fiscal plan, teacher retirement system, health insurance costs being two major expenditures that are hard to predict. Multi-year capital plan, there's going to be a presentation in the fall made by Mrs. Acker that will address what we're looking forward to in the years to come regarding capital work. Number six, maximize effective use of all district facilities, and obviously, the investigation of energy cost-saving initiatives is a major piece that we engage in every year. Effective use of all district facilities, as I mentioned before, I think our high school auditorium is now going to take on a new level of demand based on the fact that it is, it's a cool place to be. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. It works. Technological infrastructure, hardware. Technology has been a major focus, and I'd like to certainly commend Mrs. Acker and Mrs. Robinette. There has been a lot of tech work done this summer that these teachers are going to become familiar with very quickly. A lot of it is basically protecting our network in a manner that has never been in place to this level before, and we've also done a lot of work in terms of just taking protection of personally identifiable information to the next level. And these are things that will be turnkey to the teachers, again, for their protection and for the protection of our students here, but also the fact that we are now a fully-integrated one-to-one-device district. Every child K through 12 is going to have a device assigned to them. The intermediate and secondary-level students will be able to take them home. And again, we also want to make sure that we're continuing to recognize that technology is not a goal, it is a means to achieve goals, it is not the end goal in itself. And I think we all reckon, looking at the teachers, because they know this already, we use it to further learning and not to repeat the same things over and over again and use them just for the sake of using them in terms of devices and whatnot. Homeschool communication, parent engagement are always on this list and should be. Ongoing communication with and professional development of the district's UPK providers and maximize articulation between providers and district staff. Again, we have the program in-house. This will be much facilitated based on the proximity of our teachers and the teachers that we have a vested interest in, and we've recommended them for hire in most cases. Food service provider, we just, the board just approved a bid at the last meeting. We have some new items on the table that will make our food service program even better. And we also talked about looking into health-conscious and local farm-to-table options that will certainly not be overlooked, and we do have some meeting dates set up for the two trustees at the table who expressed interest, one actively and one a little bit more passively, but you're both involved anyway. Communication with town, county, state, and federal government officials in an effort to ensure that district interests are considered and addressed as initiatives are planned and are implemented at the respective governmental levels. This is a mainstay, and we've had multiple occasions over the past few years where our voices needed to be heard. Number 12 is new, and if you'd like me to reword this, please let me know. This follows my appointment to the Executive Board of the Suffolk County School Superintendent's Association. I believe we discussed this last week, supporting my efforts there as well as the administrative efforts here with respect to advocacy for the educational needs of Huntington students. My goal will be, obviously, I want all students in New York to experience success, but if I have to focus my energies in one place or another, it's going to be on what we need as a student body, as a group here, and it's going to be an active year in that regard because there are a lot of things on the table, a lot of changes that are still being discussed. All right, that said, I will take a breath, and if there's anything that you see there that you'd like upgraded, downgraded, modified, altered, added, subtracted, this is the time.
Jim, I've been doing a little research. Sometimes you send us articles, and those articles are great, and I do, as attorneys do, we kind of shepherdize, which is sort of like cross-referencing with other articles, other ideas, and I came across this thought. It's called school connectedness. And I'll read you a little bit about what I found, and this is just an idea. School connectedness is the belief held by students that adults and peers in schools care about their learning as well as about them as individuals. Students are more likely to engage in healthy behaviors and succeed academically when they feel connected to school. Research has shown that young people who feel connected to their schools are less likely to engage in many risk behaviors, including early sexual initiation, alcohol, tobacco, other drug use, violence, and gang involvement. Students who feel connected to their schools are more likely to have better academic achievement, including higher grades, test scores, have better school attendance, and stay in school longer. A district personnel that reflects the cultural diversity of the student population could render advantageous to many of the students of the district. So I kind of penned something as we were sitting here as a goal, possibly, I'm thinking, encourage a recruitment and selection process of district personnel that focuses on strategies that increase student connectedness. And that's just the first time I penned it. I mean, just an idea.
So kind of zoning, and I don't think we have a goal situated right now that relates to the recruitment and hiring process, and it is obviously something that, well, we focus on it, I can tell you, in our administrative evaluation process, our metrics does specifically address hiring, recruitment, and retention.
And I tell you, one of the reasons I'm here is because I feel connected to this district. I had a teacher that was very influential in my high school career that, he actually paid for my application to college and attended my college graduation, and I really think that I was connected to him and then became connected to the district. You know, I think it's always nice that we have things like that that we can kind of promote as a district.
Could I ask a question, Xavier? Now that you read that whole part, would you be opposed to expanding that goal to, with what you said, and then in addition to that, maybe some kind of statement about encouraging, finding a way to continue to encourage the connectedness in other ways? Because from what you read initially was a little bit more general, and that was one way to have students, I think there are probably a lot of ways.
Absolutely.
That we could encourage student connectedness, and I think we do. I mean, I think this district is really good at that, but to continue it and to make it a priority, you know, to describe it as a priority.
And I can tell you that one of the things that comes up all the time, and you see it in the literature that I share with you, and I see it in what comes across my desk every day, when you talk about the four Rs, I mean, you've got your reading, you're right, not really the Rs, but think only Rs, reading, writing, arithmetic, and number four, relationships. They can never be overlooked, and you can be the most brilliant educator in the world if you can't make that connection with children and you don't build that rapport with them. It's going to be much more of a struggle in terms of getting them to where they want to be.
And it really helps to foster a lot of trust between students and staff members and people in the, I mean, I can tell you, I won't embarrass the person who's in this room, but there is someone in this room who reached out to, who reaches out to students all the time, who, you know, makes sure to go to their extracurricular activities to make sure that they, that those students know that cares as a person.
See the kind of person that if a ball is kicked over the fence, that he would go get it for them?
Exactly.
I witnessed that myself today. I'm not going to turn and look because.
There's not that many people in the room.
I think any of them would do that, but I just happened to witness this person doing it. What are you doing?
So how do you, how do you work that into a goal then?
I don't know.
I mean, if you'd like to give it a little thought, and, I mean, I can give it some thought, too, and we can come up with.
Yeah, could we? Xavier, could you write that out in an email to all of us so that we could?
Absolutely, yeah. I'll send it to everyone.
If we can bounce our ideas off, too, if any of us think of a way to flesh it out, that makes it, you know, more clear, because I think it's fantastical. I can't imagine there's not somebody on this board who wouldn't feel behind that.
My thought is, you spent a fair amount of time describing what student connectedness is, but then in your goal statement, just referred to student connectedness. I think the statement of the goal needs to include some sort of a brief description of what we mean by that.
Okay.
Okay? Because your, what you read didn't have that.
No, no.
It was prefaced on that.
Yeah, but if we could get that, then we can kind of all maybe brainstorm about how to create a goal out of it.
We can bounce that off each other and then send something out. What else, is there anything else here that?
Everything else looks good.
Yeah, because we tweaked them.
So here's what I'll suggest, and we have another meeting coming up relatively soon. Let's bounce some ideas off, let's get that into a final version, we can call it number 13 or insert it anywhere in the mix there, and then present the entire package, and we don't have to go through them one by one on the 11th and just highlight that one and get them ready for adoption on the 11th.
Sounds good.
Okay? Great, all right. Thank you.
Thanks, Xavier. Please.
I was going to say, ouch. Thank you.
Moving on to curriculum and instruction, we have a CSE/CPSE, and Ms. Beth McCall.
Very exciting to have two items on the agenda tonight. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves CSE/CPSE submissions as delineated.
So if I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Jen, and a second? Xavier?
I have to abstain from the vote.
Okay.
For personal reasons.
You got it.
All in favor? That is everyone with Christine abstaining. And next?
And the second agenda item, we are looking for approval for this year's guidance plan, but prior to doing that, I'd like to highlight a few changes from last year's plan, which are at the Huntington High School, we added Alumni Day, which is a new endeavor in the district. It's scheduled for Friday, January 5th, 2018. The plan for the day will be forthcoming. We'll be looking to invite alumni from June of 2017 for the first session, and in future years, create an ambassador program where other alumni can discuss their college transition process over a several-year timeframe.
Love that idea.
It's great.
I do, that's a great idea.
Okay.
At Finley Middle School, there are a few other changes, sorry.
Well, go right ahead, sorry.
At Finley Middle School, we replaced the Guidance Direct program with Naviance, our communication platform that is also utilized for college and career exploration and research. The middle school students now have opportunities to explore some of the features that are already accessible to high school students and to assist students in their transition into high school. A career exploration week was also added this past year, which took place during the second week of May, where guest professionals came to Finley to discuss various careers in visual arts, music, criminal justice, and education. And at several of the elementary buildings, we added the school safety patrol program starting in January of 2017, where student volunteers assisted with morning arrival and dismissal. Safety patrol members take their posts in the hallways and common areas to ensure safe transitions to and from the buses, and the teachers will train the students and plan for the implementation of the school safety patrol. That's it.
Okay.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt the revised district guidance plan for the 2017-2018 school year.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Barry, and a second?
I'll second.
Christine, anyone have any questions?
No, but I'm so glad that Naviance is at the, that makes so much more sense.
The continuity is.
I never quite understood why we started with the one program, Finley, and then went to Naviance at the high school, so this is all good. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor? That is everyone. Thank you, Beth. Moving on to personnel.
Okay, I am asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 10, 11, 13, 16, 19, 20, and 22.
Okay, so everyone received that? Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Jen, and a second?
Second.
Christine, all in favor? That is everyone.
I'm trying to see out there, I see two. All right, I'm just going to, is that Patty and Angel in the back?
Hello, I'm Angela Whitfield and you guys know I don't count tonight, so I just wanted to say a couple of things.
Said with love.
I know. After 23 years, I can say that. It's family here. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One thing, I would like to thank everybody who was able to be a part of the ballgame because that was a great experience for everybody and I think a lot of people, I heard really positive things. And it was such a great game. It was just a lot of fun being able to be out on the field at the start and everything. It was just very exciting, so thank you. And I hope you guys made a lot of money because it was, it's a great cause and, you know, we, it goes right back to the school district, so that's great. Second thing, we actually came late because we were at the firehouse tonight for the Huntington Reeds Program. And again, 43 kids, their families. It was an awesome turnout and it's a great thing that has happened. And I just also want to say, as I'm listening to all the positives that have been going on, especially with the donations, getting that kid into college, awesome experience. I don't know if you guys realize how much happens on a daily basis with helping anonymously because so many people do it on all walks of life in this, in this district. And I've seen it, I've been a part of it, and it's just an incredible experience. So I just wanted to say, it is family and it is amazing because I don't know if every district has it. And it's really nice that people are able to turn back and that connectedness is there with the staff. So it's definitely something we could definitely work on to make sure that it comes back with the kids. So, and I think that's a lot with the Huntington graduates that come back and buy houses here and the teachers who are new who buy houses here. So it's a great thing. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Excellent point.
And please thank Mr. Jerry Whitfield for joining us at the game and for wearing Huntington blue. He retired as a teacher at Wallbrook High School. Was it 40, huh? Terrific man. Terrific family.
Yeah, we did forget to mention that, the baseball game.
Thank you for mentioning that because it was on nobody's list tonight.
It was on nobody's list tonight, so thank you for bringing that up.
It was a terrific night, a terrific game. We had, and we had over 300 people there and they led us onto the outfield warning track during the National Anthem and I...
Yeah.
Actually, Jaime Garcia was pitching for the Yankees and he, the ball went past him and almost took, took somebody's head off, but, and that's when, actually, they took us off the warning track. But it was a great experience and it was only Huntington out there and there was a lot of us, so...
And Aaron Judge's homerun was only like eight miles down. So it was amazing. It was really such a great experience.
I forget who won?
No, you didn't.
Forget who won?
No, you didn't.
No, you didn't.
No, but thanks for mentioning that.
Thank you, Angela.
All right. Any other comments by board members? Looking like a no. Get a motion to adjourn. Jen, and a second.
Second.
Barry?
Oh, sure, that one, everybody else.
All in favor? That is everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Everyone, good luck next week.
Yes.